This is Nicholas Glover with the Tampa Bay Chamber. I want to thank and welcome our viewers tuning into our 2023 interview series for Tampa City Council elections. The Chamber focuses on policy, not politics, and while we do not endorse, we do want to make sure that these candidates understand where the business community stands on the issues most important to them. We're excited to have Gwendolyn Henderson running for City Council District Five with us today. Gwendolyn, thanks so much for being with us.
Thank you so much for having me. I'm really excited to talk to you.
Absolutely. We are just under 60 days from Election Day, and now that we are in this final stretch, can you give us a brief update on how the campaign is going and what message you hope to deliver to voters?
Well, actually, we are 38 days away from this election on March 7th, and I'm super excited as a political newcomer. My campaign is, if I had to evaluate it as a teacher, I would say that we're in progress and we're striving and we're being effective, moving toward highly effective. I have a ground campaign that is underway, boots on the ground to hit the communities, to let them know who I am. I have a public appearances that I'm making, my calendar is pretty full, talking to the business community like you, the Real Estate Association and other organizations throughout Tampa, also answering plenty of questionnaires that are coming my way. I think the best part for me in saying how it's going is the significant amount of support that I've received, what I call my homegirls and homeboys, straight out of Carver City Jefferson High School, as well as my college alma mater, Florida Anam University, and my personal community, just in an amazing way, people are just affirming that they feel this is a great opportunity for the city of Tampa to get to know me and what I'm capable of and allowing what I do as a professional educator to translate into serving the city of Tampa. So I'm really excited about that's how it's going. I feel good that there, I see a pathway to victory, and this is one of the opportunities, talking to the Tampa Bay Chamber, to provide a little bit more even to the business community about who I am and hopefully providing an opportunity even in a nonpartisan way for people to make up their own mind because they actually do have a choice in District Five because I am in this race. So thanks for asking.
Absolutely. Thank you. And now I want to talk about leadership, and in particular, Gwendolyn, if you can share with us what you believe the role of City Council is, and a follow-up question to that is, do you see that role of City Council potentially changing over the course of the years?
What is the role of City Council? That is a very good question. The primary role of the city, for leadership role for any person sitting on a City Council is to serve the citizens of Tampa, making the best decisions possible, governing our city in an effective way with the leader, which is the mayor. We are a mayor-led city. I have no problem with that. Recently, I read an article where 63% of the voters say that they want a City Council that's willing to work with the mayor to move the agenda forward, and I absolutely agree with that. There is a lot of combativeness that's taking place on City Council, and it is not necessary. That's not how you solve problems. That's not how you build bridges. And I'm a collaborator. At the end of the day, that's what I am. I solve problems with little people all the time, teenagers. I serve a population that is the future. I'm responsible for human capital, preparing students for life, and we problem solve at this level. And I think that design thinking and some other strategies used in education that could benefit City Council. So I see my role in that as being a collaborator. In fact, I just want to say even currently with the city and how it's currently governed, I know that there has been pushback regarding that. And I just want to say that for the first time in my life as an adult, from, you know, from childhood to now, the current mayor has provided us with the most diverse cabinet. Her department chairmans are the most diverse that I've seen in the city of Tampa. It represents a lot of people, especially women of color in key positions. I appreciate that. We are, as you know, we are winning all the time and a lot of people. Let me send this to voicemail. A lot of people, oh, I hope, okay, a lot of people. Not a lot of people, but I want to be very specific. I'm sorry. Tampa deserves the diversity that is represented within the city on City Council, various perspectives, various socioeconomic backgrounds. You can't have one type of person on City Council. A lot of voices need to be heard, and we also need to bid farewell to prejudices so that we can work things out. People come with notions. They think they have the problem already solved. They have ideas, but we have to set a foundation where all voices are heard. And I see a City Council where problem-solving strategies are put in place to support the mayor's agenda and the comprehensive plan that we put forth in the state of Tampa, backed up by the Tampa Chamber of Commerce. You know, you all do a great job of outlining for the business community the vision, the mission, and the values, and incorporating that into understanding that we're serving the citizens, we're serving businesses, and being able to make the best decisions possible by starting from a standing point of keeping human beings in mind and saying farewell to prejudices. So governing in an effective way with those type of problem-solving strategies in place will serve us very well, and I'm here to do that. I think that I am the right person to do that.
Thank you. I want to talk about something that's really important to this chamber. Obviously, we are very big proponents of housing options for all citizens, including workforce housing, which we define as that 80 to 120% of area meeting income, or that missing middle is what it's also called. What I want to ask you, Gwendolyn, is what zoning policies or code changes would you want to support to address the growing workforce housing needs in our city?
You know, that's a really good question. I am very passionate about housing. Just a personal point of privilege, I think I, you know, deserve to say this because I'm very proud of it. I was 25 years old when I bought my first property as a single parent, and I bought my property through the city of Tampa, Tampa, the mayor's, Mayor Sandy Friedman's Challenge Fund, because I believed in the city at a time when there was a big exodus to the suburbs. My very best friend, lifelong friend, you know, moved to Tampa, Tampa Palms, and I wanted to stay in the city. I love being in close proximity to the things that are important to me. And so in me purchasing a home, an affordable home, redeveloping and believing in Tampa Heights, a dilapidated community 31 years ago, with the support of Tampa Reservation, is something that I can see firsthand that the development of what we need in this city, just watching the growth and the changes that are taking place, is that we need to look at things that are reasonable, that actually exist in my neighborhood, which is accessory dwellings, because it's giving an affordable option. It's also giving a family an opportunity to, you know, increase some income in their household and providing housing for someone who may need it, whether it's a single working person or, you know, maybe a mom with one kid and someone who wants to be in the city. We serve a population. Right now, you know, we have a population of workers through our traveling tourism industry, we, hospitality industry. We have a lot of people who work in town that can't afford to live in town. And the people that is a priority for the Tampa Chamber of Commerce is important that we have works, livable spaces that are affordable for people who work in this city at the medium income in which you're talking about. Also, you know, one of the things, and it's really popular, if you're watching HGTV or watching some YouTube channels, is tiny home. I love the idea of having tiny home communities. It gives us an opportunity to put more people in a particular space. So we have to look at our laws, so that our zoning laws and changing those to provide housing to more people. And honestly, we can't forget about our homeless population. We have 7,000 students, unaccompanied minors, who don't have a place to live in, you know, in our city. We have a serious, we have, we have a tent city in Ebor City that maybe a lot of people don't know about. So as we're remembering who we are as a town, we have to think about those who are truly underprivileged and those who are working every day because there are working people who don't have housing. I just happen to be very close to Salita's house, the staff there, and knowing the face, the things that they face, the challenges. So we have to have partnerships with our community to solve these problems. There's no one answer to it. We have to involve the nonprofit organizations that are doing a great job, like Catholic Charities and Metropolitan Ministries, and, you know, the list can go on and on, to help us solve some of these problems and even look at the possibility of even bringing in, there's a grant that's coming up to help, that can help even unaccompanied minors, you know, have a place to live. And I know that things like that work. I had a student here at Jefferson. She graduated from Jefferson and lived in unaccompanied housing right off of Bay Shore Boulevard. And she graduated from the University of Central Florida, and now she is a nurse making more money than I do as a classroom teacher, but she's doing very well. She's thriving. So we have to think about the young people as a person who is seeking this opportunity on City Council. That is always going to be at the forefront of my mind when it comes to workforce development. I'm a career and technical education professional, so our students having the skills necessary to earn the jobs that pay well so that they can afford to live in the city that they were born and raised in is a priority for me. As I said in wrapping this up, because I know that's kind of long-winded, is that there is not one way to fix this problem. It's going to take the collaboration of a City Council and a mayor who has a comprehensive plan in place that we can buy into a Tampa Chamber of Commerce, a Tampa Bay Chamber that has a strategic plan in place that supports workforce housing, and even now a superintendent who has also brought up workforce housing because as we look to rezone some of our schools, he understands that teachers need a place to live. And so there's just a lot of moving parts to that, that question, and I do appreciate it. And I'm just all about the problem solving to support getting that, improving that situation. You know, a lot of people may present, you know, the grandios, oh, I can solve this problem. You know, in reality, that we cannot solve every single homelessness problem, every single housing problem, but we can collaboratively put a dent in some of the primary focuses that are already drafted on paper, and we just have to bring it to fruition. So thanks for that question.
Thank you. So we began by talking about the role of City Council, and one of the things, obviously, that is a big responsibility of council is approving the city's budget. Some state experts and economic analysts are anticipating potentially a slowdown in the economy during your term. How should the city prioritize spending if we do, in fact, have an economy that slows?
Okay, that's, you know, that's a really good question. The, the city budget is $1.9 billion. That's a lot of money. And I know that a lot of that is tied into human capital. We have a police force. We have firefighters. We have the people who run all the departments in our city. And so they just got a raise, which is, you know, well deserved, I think 9.25%. We have to be fiscally responsible and take care of human capital first. That would be a priority in terms of how I would look at the budget and being fiscally responsible. We want to keep everybody employed, but we may have to look at what is the best way that our employees can serve. Maybe they need to update their skills so that they can move to an area where there's a higher need and be very realistic about that and also very transparent. That would be, you know, my approach to this. Like I said, $1.9 billion is a lot of money, and I think that we've even increased our budget. It wasn't that big just a few years ago. But taking a look at every line item and carefully, you know, questioning everything. One thing I will say, I was asked a question on one of my, my questionnaires by organization asking for, would you approve an attorney for the, for the Citizen Review Board? And which is a volunteer board. And so this is a little bit of my personality coming out and also shows just a little bit about how I'm thinking. So the, I think it was Bob Buckhorn, who, you know, through an executive order, established the community, the Citizen Review Board, and their role is to provide policy changes or things for the chief of police to consider. So a volunteer board of 11 people, nine of them voting. So my response to them, and I know you say, oh, who is this girl? I said, okay, so you have a volunteer board of 11 people, nine of them are voting. The two who don't vote, one of them should be the attorney that can advise you, and therefore the city won't have to pay anybody because you already have a volunteer situation going on. Find an attorney that doesn't vote, and one of those two people that don't vote should be an attorney. That is, that is very practical. And, and so, you know, putting that line item in the budget for 50, 60, $75,000, you know, I know lawyers charge way more than, you know, it is to be a teacher. But at the end of the day, that being very specific like that and being very practical is important to me. I'm a single mom. I had three jobs, sent a daughter off to college, and very proud of that. And my daughter wrote a paper. One of the questions in elementary school is what's your mom, what is your mom's favorite thing to do? And she wrote a paper, my mom's favorite thing to do is to pay bills. Because I would say that, I'm paying bills, I'm paying bills. So me being fiscally responsible for the city, I would take care, just like I have taken care and lived a good life as a teacher, I would take care of the city budget in the same way. I know that's not a big business type of answer, but I would question things and try to make the best decisions possible and where we can save, as well as generate revenue. How can we generate revenue that is reasonable and increase our revenue so that we can accomplish some of the things? And keep this in mind, you know, there's the city and the county, and the city's budget is only a third of the money that's brought in. The county also has a responsibility to social, to shoulder some of the social programs so that we can be effective together. We have to collaborate with our partners, like the county commissioners, you know, to get some of the things done, including, you know, looking at our budget and not necessarily dipping into their budget, but sharing the role of what you know impacts the citizens of Tampa and Hillsborough County.
So you mentioned the county commission. I want to talk about the idea of home rule and the legislature. Local governments across the state have been critical of the legislature in recent years. Gwendolyn, do you think that preemption has become a problem in Tallahassee? And if you do, how would you work to establish a more productive working relationship with our legislative delegation?
Well, you know, in a nonpartisan way, problem solving is, like I said earlier in a comment, you know, removing the prejudices of how you think things should be done. We all have differences, but we have to work together to solve problems. You know, there's, we have some new people in Tallahassee, you know, representing us, and Frances Driscoll is there, and Jay Collins, who, you know, recently won his seat, I believe, a guy named Beltrum or something like that. But you have to work with these people in a collaborative way, but also remembering at the same time, this is our city. And we know Tallahassee has a voice in serving us. But at the same time, in the city and the county, we are here, there are people in place in all parts of the city of Tampa who work to put together the vision and the comprehensive plan and to say, this is where we are going, this is what we should be doing. They've gotten input from the citizens, and we need to shoulder that responsibility and present ourselves when we're working with state legislature to be collaborative, but also painting the picture that this is our town, and we've done the work, and this is what we need, and we need the support. How can you support what we're asking for?
Thank you for that. Obviously, in addition to housing, economic development is very important to the chamber. The utilization of public-private partnerships continues to be an asset for local governments across the country. What opportunities for P3s do you see in the city of Tampa?
That is a really good question. Public-private partnership is very important, and also including nonprofits in that. We have to look at our comprehensive plan, look at, you know, the Tampa Bay Chamber. Look at all of our priorities when it comes to having a livable choice and sustainability and saying to all of our partners, developers, citizens, the council, everyone, and prioritizing the needs of the city. So maybe, for example, the, the public-private partnership when it comes to housing. Developers, you know, developers want incentives. You know, we generate, now that we have all of this housing, expensive housing, you know, that's an opportunity to generate some funds so that developers can, and I can't speak on this on a, on a very precise, intelligent way because I would have to do a little bit more research, but there's a way for us to provide incentives for developers to say, you know what? We want to do business in your town, but at the same time, we want to be socially responsible and corporate consciousness. I talk about that with my students in class. We want developers who want to be here, and they want to work with the city. They want to work with us to create the right type of housing that is going to serve the population that we have. But we also want our nonprofits to support us as well. There, even when it comes to grant fund, grant, grant funding, there are, there's money out there that's available where we can bring resolution to our unaccompanied minors, things like that. And a developer saying, you know what, we have the right, we, we can create or develop a plan where we can support something like that, that puts them in this very safe space that has some economic vibrancy to it, that maybe can possibly provide their part-time jobs and provide them a livable space, a little tiny, a tiny room. And I mean, there's just so many different ideas. I'm a teacher. I can brainstorm this with you all day, but I do believe in public-private partnerships. I think that is very important. Something that I would collaborate with anyone that's, that's about the business of improving the life of citizens of Tampa and making that a priority, even the, you know, the realtors. The realtors are people who are what you would call that private partnership. And, you know, having those conversations with them to say, hey, what is it that we can do to help solve this housing crisis? Where do you see it going? What can we do to improve this situation? We got to bring in all stakeholders, whether it's the county, the private partners, as well as the city to, you know, continue any type of collaboration. And I'll just stop there because I can get a little long-winded, but I hope you get my point.
Thank you. Now on to the topic of transportation. As you know, uncertainty still persists with the already collected All for Transportation dollars. As I'm sure you're aware, the fate of those dollars is now in the hands of the Florida Legislature. Assuming that Hillsborough is able to secure those funds this legislative session, what are the most important transportation investments that you'd like to see, Gwendolyn?
You know, that's a really good question. You know, I know that there's about a half a billion dollars sitting in Tallahassee. And, you know, as a teacher, I'm, you know, in my office right now, and we have students, for example, here at Jefferson High School. If you live within two miles of Jefferson, you have to walk to school. Okay, so let's look at that. Are the sidewalks there? You know, we have to look at that and say, hey, can our, can our kids get to school safely? And maybe that those funds can address an issue like that and prioritize looking at all of our schools and where they're located within the city and saying, because this, this money presents an opportunity. There's some problems we're not going to be able to solve. Railway, right away being one of them. The citizens have said no, and they said no. And so that's just a pill that we're going to have to swallow, but we do have an opportunity to look at some high priority needs, and that would be one of them for me. You know, we've had some incidences where students have been killed on their way to school because of, you know, the way in which they have to go to school. And Hillsborough County has done, has addressed that problem. We've had to face that. But of course, we need dollars and support to provide a type of mobility that benefits our children. I'm going to always think about the kids, you know, in this role. When I leave this role and serve in City Council, I will always think about our greatest human capital, and that's the young people. Every decision that we make, we have to keep them in mind. And I would also look at the underserved communities and look at that being the high priority needs. I wanted to tell you a quick story. My job was with the city of Tampa, so was my sister. And my sister, I was a custodian at Pierce Junior High School. My sister worked downtown. Her job was to count the cracks in the sidewalk on Bay Shore Boulevard. And for some reason, that resonated with me. Why I remember that? Because I am, you know, in my 50s, but it has always stuck. Came home from college in my 20s. We had sidewalks in Carver City for the first time, and it daunting the cracks in the sidewalk in one of the richest communities in the city of Tampa. But yet I grew up in a very heavily populated children community, African-American community. And we didn't have sidewalks until I was grown. And so with someone like me, because that's what happens in spaces like this. You have a certain type of person or community that will make a lot of noise. Want some? Yeah, there's a greater need across the street. And so we have to share. And so sometimes we have to say to people who may want it but don't need it, well, not right now. That is not a priority. They need it more than. Okay, I don't know what happened, but we're back. Are you here?
Gwendolyn, you're breaking up just a little bit. I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Gwendolyn, it came back. Can you hear me now?
I can. It's telling me that you have low bandwidth. I'm wondering if, if turning off your camera might, might be the best option.
Okay, okay. I was going to say I could log in on another phone. You want me to try that?
No, try, try turning off your camera for now, and let's see if that helps a little bit.
Okay. Okay.
Can you still hear me? Can you hear me now?
Okay, is that better?
That's 100%.
Yeah, I can hear you. Is that better?
It is. So I heard the tail end of your, of your comment on, on Bay Shore. But I want to make sure that our viewers have the opportunity to hear the rest of the story.
Yeah. So the bottom line is, is that sometimes, you know, we have to tell one community, you know, the truth. You can wait. Not right now. There's a greater need somewhere else. And so that sidewalk story just resonates with me now because I know that there are going to be decisions within City Council where the person making the most noise doesn't necessarily have the greatest need. And we are going to have to prioritize, especially with funds like this, the mobility funds that will come from Tallahassee. It's a lot of money, and at the same time, we have to look at and prioritize what, where's the greatest need because we can, and we can address it right now and get things done faster. You know, that 75-year paving plan can be done a whole lot faster with these additional funds, along with the billion-dollar repiping of Tampa, because we do need to change out our clay pipes before we repave the roads. So just prioritizing and, and doing what we can to get to the end goal faster is how I would see, you know, the distribution of that funding going.
Thank you so much. Absolutely. We're at the tail end of our time. But before we wrap up, I wanted to see if there is a point that's important to you in your campaign that we did not discuss or something you want to reemphasize.
Okay. I really want to turn back on my camera. Hopefully we can do. I don't feel right talking to you and seeing a picture of me when I was probably with no gray hair. But nevertheless, I think what I would say is, you know, thank you for the opportunity. My name is Gwen Henderson. I am a highly effective educator that I believe has transferable leadership skills that was served City Council well. The way that you can go about learning more about me, besides listening to this video, I hope I was very insightful in answering your questions. I do have a website. It's my full name, gwendolynhenderson.com, G W E N D O L Y N H E N D E R S O N dot com. And I also am on Twitter at @voteGwendolyn, at the at sign. And um, I also am on Twitter, um, at Vote Gwendolyn, at the at sign. Um, I'm not going to tell you what 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 it is on the keyboard, but I think you'll figure it out. So at Vote Gwendolyn is my Twitter. And what I will say about my social media, because I have provided it, is that you you will also, you know, you'll get a chance to see who I am as a person and how I've served the community. Um, you'll see that I love talking about Jefferson High School and the things that we've accomplished and the things that I have accomplished here. Um, that's just who I am. I'm also, some of the things, you know, I'm a bookstore owner because I teach entrepreneurship. Um, under a nationally backed program network for teaching entrepreneurship. That's really important that we give our kids an entrepreneurial mindset. I know that's something the chamber can get behind and um, you know, it inspired me to start my own business. I have an online bookstore where I'm looking for a brick and mortar place. I support small businesses. I actually am a property owner. So there's just a lot of different perspectives that I can draw from to help make some of the decisions that we have to make. You know, as a city in doing what's best for um, the city of Tampa that we, you know, love so much and care about. And obviously, a lot of people love it too because they're moving here every day. You know, and so um, as we welcome in new people and, you know, and we say that we're inclusive. We have to still think about those um, people who are already here and the needs of of um, every space within the city um, where we can do our best service. So thank you so much for this interview. I am uh, so excited as a political newcomer. And I have given District Five uh, a choice. It is a democracy. And um, I feel like I have a pathway to victory. And hopefully, you know, I can see you all on the other side celebrating with me. Thank you so much for your time.
Ms. Gwendolyn Henderson, running for City Council, District Five on behalf of our members and our Board of Directors, we want to thank you for joining us today and for your willingness to serve in an elected office. That concludes our interview.
Thank you.